Miami, today is our regular commission meeting of, oh, actually it was amended, so what's the day here? April Fools. Today is April 1st, 2015.
That's why the copy machine was playing games on me.
But this meeting is actually taking place for the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. Let's bow our head this evening and thank the Lord for our daily blessings, accompany us in prayer. We pray for leadership, we pray for family, we pray for a sense of community, and we are thankful for all our friendships. We pray for those that are ill and frail, especially those residents who reside in the city of West Miami. We pray for our world leaders, and especially for our servicemen and women who are protecting our boundaries. We also pray for our law enforcement officers so that they are safe and out of harms way, and we pray for our firefighters. Especially this evening, I'd like to pray for the family of firefighter Ralph Garcia who lost his life at a very young age to a terrible disease, and he leaves behind a wife and a soon-to-be-born baby. So, we ask for a moment of silence, and I know this is particularly, very dear to the heart of Vice Mayor Juan Blanis. We ask for peace and for many blessings. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
For the pledge of allegiance, Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Roll call, Commissioner Luciana Suarez, excuse this evening, Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanis.
Present.
Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Mayor Yuah Kwan.
Thank you. Item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for March 18th, 2015, regular city commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And at this time, I would like to take one item out of order. I would like to go right into 11A.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Item 11A, under new business agenda items, item 11A, presentation of recognitions to the sponsors of the art and music festival 2015 by Mayor and City Commission. And I would like to acknowledge the sponsors of this event, which were the state companies, TY Lin, Baptist Health South Florida, and our corporate citizen Elliot Asbell.
Thank you very much. Ms. Aguilar, would you like to add anything to it?
Mr. Mayor, as you are aware, we made the event possible, and obviously, I know that you were behind it 100 percent, but the event would not have been made possible without the corporate sponsorships and the support of the community, and of course, the vendors who paid for their booth, but primarily, we really took a leap of faith, if you want to call it that, and you know, the cultural event was just absolutely amazing, and I think you all that were there will agree to the fact that, for our first time, we have received numerous compliments, and it would not have been made possible without the support of our corporate sponsors and partners. That being said, I know, Mayor, that the arts and cultures are very, culture is very dear to your heart, and I think it brought West Miami into a different, we're at a different level now, and the residents, from what I've heard, were really pleased with the outcome of the event. So, this evening, you have some certificates that you have requested, Mr. Mayor, so that you can present to your sponsors.
Thank you very much. I echo what Yolanda Aguilar mentioned, and I just want to add that, and probably, this is part of her report, but I'm happy to say that financially, we did good, and what I mean by that is, we were a little better than breaking even. So, that is excellent for a first event. As we all know, we went into this as a pioneer, and it's something that is new to the city of West Miami, which is known in many, many cities, but it is something that I'm grateful that it turned out the way. I have received a lot of phone calls, a lot of thank you emails, letters, et cetera, saying, you know, how pleased they were, and this event was excellent. But, thank you very much for the sponsors, and with that, I would like to invite my colleagues to come forward and recognize those that help us with the event financially.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I've got a text from Maria Luisa from Baptist Health South Florida. She can't attend because she's flying to Tallahassee this evening, so you know, she won't be present, but we mailed her the certificate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a certificate over here for TY Lin. Señor Janero, come forward.
Mr. Nessie in the house.
Thank you, once again. Thank you, Mr. Nessie, and we want to thank not only you, but we also want to thank TY Lin International for helping us, and we wanted to present you with this certificate of appreciation from the city of West Miami. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How do I know this is? I'm not even going to answer.
Who's that?
I think his name is Elliot Asbell. Mr. Asbell! I know you're dressed for the occasion. And if you notice, I'm not wearing a tie today.
I felt, especially from myself, I should wear a tuxedo.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you. Good. Yes, sir. Tonight, I'm not reading this, but you know, I want you to know that we appreciate this from the bottom of our heart, and we consider you part of our West Miami family, and we really, really appreciate your efforts to help us keep West Miami on the map.
You know, I love doing so.
Elliot's always been our sixth commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, would you permission, just a few words?
Absolutely.
As the mayor said, and the manager indicated, this was a new, one called a pilot project, and I'm glad to have had the opportunity to participate. I want to compliment the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission, the administration, that the citizens should all know that this was just one more effort, and many, many efforts and efforts in the future, to look to give a better quality of life, and it's always in their agenda, previous or in the future, just a better quality of life for the citizens of West Miami. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot.
Yes, right here.
Oh, Robertson, hi, how are you? This is Mr. Suresh Junior.
We would like to present this certificate of appreciation, but before that, as I mentioned, Elliot's part of our family, and we feel like the state company is becoming part of our family, the city of West Miami. We welcome you, and we really appreciate the fact that you're investing in the city of West Miami for a better West Miami, and also helping us with the art festival.
Absolutely, it's just the beginning, hopefully.
Okay, all right. So, we want to present you with this certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much. Sure?
Come on.
Everyone has to come up, everybody come up. We may have everybody come up.
We're not there.
You're part of the family.
I have a special request.
Yes.
A picture with a resident of the city of West Miami who is visiting us tonight. He is a student from FIU, and his mother called me yesterday. He's studying the, getting into the public administration program, and he's required to attend commission meetings, so I invited them, and they are here, and it'll be great for him if you allow us to take, me to take a picture with him, so.
What's your name?
Brian Garcia.
Brian Garcia. Right. Come on.
Thanks for joining us, Brian.
Yeah.
You don't know, he'll be one day a mayor of the city of West Miami. He moved to one of his five. Really?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't be a part of this.
Brian, you sure that you want to do this?
Brian, you want to sit here for a moment, see how it feels? Thank you very much.
Best wishes to you with your studies and continuing education.
Absolutely.
With that, I would like to go back to the original order of the agenda, which will be item five.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city commission. I don't have a written report. I think we can all agree that we have been extremely busy downstairs. It's been unusually hectic, but nonetheless, I'd like to report that the city has authorized Robert Ruano, our grant writer, to go after an application for a CDBG for $125,000, which requires a match of $125,000 from park impact fees for an application to develop the, or to build the extension of the Garden Club Park. As you know, about a year and a half ago, the city acquired the property at 1129 Southwest 66th Avenue. That property is, abuts the West Miami Garden Club Park, and you have all designated and approved the conceptual drawings for the city to move forward in developing that park, because obviously, we had to, we have to address the issue of parks as per the comprehensive plan, to allow certain density to come into the city and be able to maintain the same level of service that the residents enjoy in the city of West Miami. So, having said that, because the park is located within the entitlement area, which is the community development block grant area, and the area qualifies under the national standards for low to low moderate income, we felt that the city will be in a very good position to rank high on, based on the point criteria system that this CDBG grant application process requires. So, in the absence of a meeting, we've gone ahead and authorized Mr. Ruano to pursue this grant. They are working with TY Lin and Juan Penna in my office to put together this grant application that has a due date of April 15th, 2015. And I wanted to bring this before you, because usually, we come to you with these thoughts for projects and for authorization prior to, but because there was not a meeting, and there's very little time to prepare for the grant, I wanted to make you aware of it and entertain any comments that you may have on whether we should pursue this grant opportunity or not at this time. I think it's going to be a great fit, and it really addresses the issue. It'll free up some of our park impact fee dollars so that we can pursue other possible venues that we've discussed. I've discussed it with Commissioner Rodriguez, and I think we all understand that the city will have the need to acquire green areas to accommodate for future parks. So, if you all will at least give us your blessing for us to proceed with this application, we need to keep in mind that the funding end of it, this has to go through an approval process and a ranking process, and the funding for this project conceivably could become available on or October 1st, 2015. We have some agenda items that address the property before you this evening, but I think we have a very good opportunity of being funded. We are going to rely on the District 6 Commissioner's support of this application. I have briefly spoke to her and her chief of staff, and I think that the city will definitely benefit from Commissioner Sosa's support, and she has pledged to support the application on behalf of the city. You have a rendering to remind you of what the concept is. That development of that area also comes with a forestry grant, which we are holding until we start the actual construction of the park, that enables us to plant Florida native trees. The state funded $10,000, which we have a contract, and we have three years to complete the planting of the trees, and that requires a match that the city has designated and reserved for that purpose, for a total of $20,000. So, not only will we be enhancing the park, we're going to be obviously addressing environmental issues as well, and planting trees as part of that project. So, if you agree with it, we would like your blessing so that we can continue to work on the submittal of this application.
Okay, if you're in favor, I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, motion and second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Blanis.
Blanis, second by Commissioner Blanca.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we will continue to keep you abreast of the process as we move along. The next item on my report, and the mayor touched upon it briefly, we have a detail, which I will provide you at a later time, we had, we have a detail of all the revenues that we received from the Art and Cultural Community Festival, and after all expenses were paid, the city netted $1,000, give or take. So, the art festival was a complete success in more ways than one. We did not have to use the city's match, because our revenues were greater than our expenses, and so, we have $3,750 that the city had pledged, that we reserved and designated at the end of September 30th, 2014, for last fiscal year, which the auditors have booked as a reserve, that we can redesignate, and I'll, and we have an item on the agenda, and obviously, we have $4,750 that can be devoted to an effort, and I know the mayor has an item on the agenda, so we have a jumpstart to work with. So, I'll bring that up whenever the mayor brings the item to the table. So, we're monitoring these expenses, you know that we are watchdogs in terms of the finances of the city, and we're very pleased, and we're right now also preparing a report for the Easter egg hunt. I didn't want to give you any numbers, because payroll, the payroll for the cycle ending tomorrow has to be turned into payroll, and we have to calculate the benefits, the overtime. So, by April 15th, you will have a complete financial statement on the Easter egg hunt as well, and I think we did fine there, too. At least, we covered costs. I've been advised by our independent auditors that the audit findings will be presented, or the financial statements, not the findings, the financial statements, for September 30th, 2014, will be presented to you at the September, I'm sorry, at the April 15th, 2015, commission meeting. I have met with the auditors, as well as the finance director. You will receive a memo on the unaudited portion from our office, but I am very pleased to report to you that it looks like we are on our way back to recovery, but we're still a long ways from being where we need to be in terms of reserves. But, we're very pleased, because our reserves are slowly but surely increasing, and so, the auditors will be scheduling a meeting with the mayor for early next week, and I'm pending a response from the auditor's office, Mr. Mayor, before you leave for Tallahassee, so that we can have the meeting, and he can present you with his comments, and we can address the management issues, if any, that are brought to the table. So, we'll work with you in the coming days to prepare for that meeting. One last item, and I think I see the gentleman here, we have a matter involving a water mitigation issue that came to you on December 3rd, 2014, and so, I believe that we have had conversations with the city attorney, the resident who is here this evening, and I think that you will hear on this issue from the resident, I don't see it on the agenda, but I'm presuming that the gentleman would like to address the commission, and so, if you'd like, I will reserve my report for, at the time that the resident presents his case to the commission, under citizen's presentation, or in whatever format you approve. So, that concludes my report. One final thing, city hall will close for Good Friday, and again, we need a ratification, and that's on the agenda. So, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, please feel free to inquire or ask. Thank you.
Next item.
Item seven, item six, report of the city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, still the issue of 5951 Southwest 12th Street remains unresolved. The Mr. Bertomati is here, he's not the owner of record of the property, however, he's the husband of the owner, and I think that even though he's not in the agenda, this is an issue that has been extraordinary in the past, and in order to place it on the agenda, I think that you should have a motion to reconsider, so you can hear and/or amend the way, or clarify the way that you want to do it, so you have an opportunity to hear from Mr. Bertomati, and I'll reserve, as Yolanda Aguilar did.
Okay.
Would you make that motion at this time, or when?
Well, the next item would be the report of the engineer, committee reports, and then citizen presentation.
So, should we, if we're going to motion, should it be prior to the citizens' presentation, or?
No, add the citizen presentation.
At that time, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then, next item.
Item seven, report of the city engineers. No report. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
No report this time. I already spoke about the art festival and how great it was, so that's all I have. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, let's go into the next item.
Item nine, citizen presentations.
Okay. At this time, I need a motion. If...
Motion to reconsider and...
And/or to clarify.
Because I think that's what we want. We want a clarification.
Well, but I think that it would be fair, not only to Mr. Bertomati, but also to the city manager, that you can hear, Mr. Bertomati's, whatever he wants to say, and then hear from the manager.
Okay, please come forward.
So, don't we need to vote on this motion?
To reconsider?
Well, it would be reconsidered after you decide to reconsider. I mean, it would be, the presentation would be here now. This is extraordinary. This, this is not in the books. This is something that you have done in this particular case, because the extraordinary amount of water that was spent, and so on and so forth, but this is not usually, this is a courtesy extended to the citizen in this particular case.
Come forward, please. Identify your name and the address for the record.
Good evening, great to see all of you again. Unfortunately, not under the best circumstances, but always great to see you. My name is Julio Bertomati. I reside at 5951 Southwest 12th Street.
Mr. Bertomati, would you bring out the mic a little bit higher, please?
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
The property owner is my wife, Maria Cristina Garcia. She was with me here on December 3rd. She was very, very pregnant at that point. Six days later, our daughter was born, and she's with our daughter now, so that's why she's not here, but she has given me the...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very healthy and happy baby, so that's the most important thing. But, as I said, this isn't a usual situation, just to refresh the commission's memory. On September 24th, Maria Fernandez from the city gave me a call and said, "You have a massive water leak at your house." This massive water leak is, your bill comes out to what a commercial laundromat would be. I said, "I've never seen a leak, I don't know what it is." I turned around, I came, I came back, I looked at it, and with the help of Ralph, and I always want to call him Raoul, but it's Ralph.
Ralph Montecoca?
Yes. Yeah, the gentleman that works for the city.
Yes.
Ralph, I, with his help, I identified the leak. As I said, the last time I was here, we tried to call a few plumbers to get it resolved. That day, I couldn't find anybody. My stepfather and I, he's very handy, he helped me resolve the situation that day. Then, the bill came out to a little bit over $4,800 for one, for one quarter. So, that was up to September 10th, I believe, is when that cutoff was, then, but we didn't find out to September 24th, but I'll get to that afterwards. So, this bill is $4,800. I contacted the city manager, we spoke. She said that at that point, they were only allowed, or she only had the authority to credit 50% of the sewer. One of my issues at that point was that there's, one, that there's a program that the city, that the county has, which, it's a one-time, one-time program for any resident of Miami-Dade County, where they give you 100% of the sewer, minus whatever your consumption is, which Mr. Penna and I had discussed at one point, when we, when we discussed, and he actually recommended that to the council, and I had no issue with that. And then, 50% of the water is what the resident would have to pay. There is no such item in the books. I did look at your agenda, and there is a proposed ordinance for today, I think it's L, or? Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's G on your agenda, and then there's also an L, which I found interesting as well, and I think this is the perfect day to, for having me in front of you. There's a water meter reader, I guess, it would give the city an easier read of the water meters in any situation like this, instead of it having been read on September 10th and not being processed until the 23rd or the 24th. I believe Commissioner Rodriguez asked me that same question of why that gap was, and I said, "Because from my understanding, the city's equipment at the current time, everything gets read and then gets put into the computer," so that's why there was that lapse. So, I was in front of you, we discussed that. I also said, because of that gap, there's, there's also going to be an issue with the next bill. My understanding was that the city, through the help of Ms. Aguilar and Mr. Villalobos and the council, that we were going to work on this, and there was going to be a mitigation of it, and the first bill of $4,800 was mitigated to $1,801. And where we have a disagreement, and where, this is where you would reconsider if, you know, if you decide to, and it doesn't have to be for this meeting, it could be for a different meeting. I know I'm not on the agenda, I asked to be on the agenda, but I understand that I have to be sponsored to get onto the agenda, and that, between last week and today, that didn't happen. So, however the city would want to take care of it in the future, I'm completely, you know, I leave that up to you. But, the issue is that, so the first bill was mitigated, and my understanding was that the second bill would also be mitigated. That has been, and has been done, but it had only been done to 50% of the sewer. So, my, my issue from the beginning was, it was an undetected water leak underneath the ground, coming into my house. So, from the beginning, I said, "Wait, water's coming in, I'm responsible for that." Mr. Penna was up here last time and said, you know, "We can't mitigate most of the water, because if we mitigate most of the water," you know, and I remember him pointing, because I just actually watched the video from that commission meeting, said, "You, you, 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 me, we all have to pay for it." And I agreed. I said, "I understand that. I'm not here trying to get by for nothing. I understand, even the county's program does that." I've been told that the county program doesn't, the county program doesn't apply to West Miami, because it's a bulk purchaser. I've asked to see the agreement, I was told that I had to do a... that I had to do a records request for it, and it wasn't handed to me. By trade, I am an attorney, I can read these things, and I said, "Even if I can find something that hasn't been found before, or find an avenue to do that, you know, I'd be willing to help, because not only does it help me, but it could help anyone in the future." Mr. Villalobos at that meeting, said he was going to speak to, he had put in a message to Ms. Tiesco at the county, and that he would be following up with her. That was December 3rd. I asked again on December 18th. I got no response. I asked again yesterday of Mr. Villalobos. I still haven't gotten any response. I don't know if he's spoken to Ms. Tiesco, and I'm not sure where it's at. So, my issue is the second bill, and it's not as drastic as the first bill. I think the second bill is $700 and change, and my recommendation, what I would like, and I think it's fair, is to mitigate the sewer, 100% minus whatever the consumption is. There was, the previous one had an environmental tax that was mitigated. I'm not sure if the city can do that at this point. And then, 10% of the water, which I believe is the profit that the city turns on the water. That was what was provided on the first one. The disagreement between the city and I is that the video isn't clear, and the city manager has told me that the credit that they're allowed and willing to give me at this time is the 50% of the sewer. I don't believe that's fair. I really do believe that, and this has been not a litigious thing. I've come to the city, you know, as just a resident, and to try to have a discussion and try to get this worked out, and to pay my wife and I to pay our fair share, not to do that. But, as part of the citizen presentation, I do want to bring up a few issues that I found along the way with this. One of the things that the city agreed to do with me, and between Mr. Villalobos and I, is to formalize an agreement. I was given that agreement on, on or about December 18th. That agreement, if I signed that agreement, and I decided not to pay sometime in the near future, and the city filed a lien and said, "I have this agreement and takes it to court," that agreement would give the city absolutely no rights whatsoever. It had no consideration, it had nothing. It was a very poorly worded agreement. I sent back revisions. That was December 18th. I didn't hear back on a new agreement till March 23rd. That's more than a three-month lapse in time. In between that, and the $1,800 from the first bill, we made the $100 good faith payment before that bill was due. We made a $500 payment, and we made another $200 payment. So, in all of this, I'm willing to work with it, but that lapse in time of three months, I think is unacceptable. I don't know why that happened. I want to work with the city. I come to the city with open arms to work with them, but that delay didn't really do anything. And from the beginning, one of my first comments was, "We need to make sure that this agreement includes everything, including the second bill." Nothing was said at that time, and now, when I came back and said, "Look," the agreement, as I understand it, was for both bills. They said, "No, check the video." I checked the video. I went back to the city, and I said, "At this point, the second bill was discussed. At this point, the second bill is discussed." Thirty seconds later, Ms. Aguilar says that there's going to be a credit for the second bill. And within a minute after that, the council votes on a motion. Is the motion worded as to both of them? No. Is it worded as to one? I don't believe so either. So, I think logically, and in good faith, that the city commission should work with me and my wife on the second bill. There's other issues that I want to present to the city.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes.
Please. Okay. We can talk about this, and...
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but he said that he had another issue. I would respectfully suggest that the gentleman is allowed to state whatever issues he has.
Okay. All right.
The other issue doesn't apply to me, but it should apply to the city, and is the city presentation. Under the ordinances of the city, the city has a water board. I discuss this with Ms. Aguilar, and she says the water board is no longer active. And, not that this is something that I'm planning on doing, but anyone else can come to the city and say, "I demand a meeting with the water board," and it's part of the ordinances. And if the city denies them that meeting, there can be a writ of mandamus, making the city, one, elect a water board, have regular meetings. And these are all expenses of the city that are in the ordinances, that haven't been addressed. This is something that I want to bring to the commission's attention, because someone can do this, and part of the ordinances say that whoever does this can get legal fees for it. You know, I see what the city's trying to do with the ordinance. I think that's a great idea, but when you guys discuss that ordinance and everything like that, that's something that you guys should discuss, and have that removed through the city attorney from the records, because it will greatly help the city, and not have any liability in the future. That's, besides a point from what I would like, and what I'd like to reconsider, whether at this meeting or another meeting, but as a citizen, I'd want to bring that to the city, and I think that's an open-ended issue, that liability could be there for the city.
Sorry, anything else?
The only other thing is whether the commission would like to reconsider my issue, whether at some point later on in this meeting, or another meeting, I'm open to however the commission wants to decide, or if they would like to speak more about it. I know Ms. Aguilar would have her opinion on, you know, what transpired, and the actual video from that day, but I think logically, the situation should be treated as a whole, instead of one bill, and then not another bill. And that's what I come here to ask, in good faith, and that's why I would like to reconsider.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
The reason...
One quick question, for clarification. What amount is that you're discussing? What is the amount of the issue that concerns you so much?
For the second bill, the total bill, and Ms. Aguilar, I have, and I'm sorry, I couldn't read exactly the amount.
If I recall correctly, you had a $4,000 bill?
$4,800.
$4,800?
Yes.
And because of the circumstances, you know, we've never had anything like this happen before, and as a courtesy, we're a small city, a small community, everybody knows each other. A great courtesy was extended to you, and from $4,800, it was mitigated to $1,800.
Yes.
So, you know, you should be, and I remember, I think you were very glad that we did that. And, you know, we also mentioned that, you know, someone's got to pay for that difference, and it's being absorbed by others. Now, you come before us, once again, with another figure, and do you expect us to do the same thing?
It's all part of the same, the same...
We are acting in good faith.
And so am I.
We, well, you know, you said something, "We're all acting as laypeople here." You know, we're elected officials. You know, we are laypeople. You mentioned a lot of wording there. Your verbiage was, you know, in a litigious manner of speaking. You know, you didn't sign this, you didn't sign that.
Actually, I did not tell you that.
Vice Mayor, can I interrupt you for a second?
That's incorrect.
Can I interrupt you both? Okay.
As the vice mayor said, like, for instance, myself, I'm not an attorney. I'm a simple man. And I see things in, you know, in lemon terms. And whether an agreement was signed, and I know that's very important from a legal point of view, but we, for the most part here, we hear something that, if it's logical, of course, that's why we have an attorney. We rely on the attorney for the legal aspect. But I think, I think, I think the point, and that's why I wanted to interrupt you, I think the point is, and I think the spirit is, is we looked at this bill, and whether it was in the video, or not, or was it discussed, or in the motion, or whatever, to me, it's not relevant. What is relevant is that we mitigate the fine, and perhaps what we should do is, is also since that other amount, it's part of the large amount, we should contemplate in the same manner. I mean, that, what I, that's what I think that you're talking about.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And that's what I think, that's what I think we need to consider here. And whether, you know, the time that passed, and so on, and, you know, one thing that we have here on the table, because of that, and, you know, every time we have something that comes to the table that is unique, and different, and we get caught, you know, by surprise, you know, we try to work on it, and we delegate it to the city attorney, we delegate it to the manager. So, we don't fall into that again. And we appreciate that you brought it to our attention, but I think, I don't want to get lost in the shuffle. I don't want to discuss this all night. What I want to go is back to what you said, Vice Mayor. You know, what is the question? You know, the question is, and, you know, may I call you Julio?
Yes, of course.
Julio, coming here, you know, I'd rather you, Julio, come here as a resident.
And that's how I am. I've come here as a resident.
And then, let's discuss it, and if we agree or disagree, you know, instruct the manager, and I'm forward.
I would like to hear from the city manager.
Huh?
I would like to hear from this.
Okay. Yes, yes.
As a point of clarification, before we continue, I believe Commissioner Blanis had a motion to reconsider. Do we have to second that before we proceed, to be sure everything is clarified? Or can we just proceed with his motion to reconsider?
Well, once you hear, once you hear the petition, which there was a question, "How much are you looking for?" Then, there can be a motion to reconsider, and you second it, and then you discuss it.
So, we do need to make that motion before we take any action once we're done?
Well, first of all, you need to find out, what are we talking about?
How much more? I don't think you answered that. How much more?
You didn't provide me the opportunity, but I will let you know. I believe the bill, and I could look at the numbers that Ms. Aguilar provided me, and she could verify. Yes, I wanted to give you the exact number. I don't know if Ms. Aguilar has...
I have a copy of the bill. I have to total it. May I?
Is that $700 before the 50% reduction?
Yes. After the 50% reduction, the email that I have from Ms. Aguilar is $5.30 with 18 cents.
So, $5.30 could be the amount that we're speaking of?
That is the amount of, the total for the bill, to include the 50% mitigation, if you want to call it that, on the sewer, which is what we have done consistently with other cases, and we have had other cases as Mr. Bertomati's case.
So, that's already been afforded to him?
Yes, sir.
That second quarter bill, that 50% mitigation?
The December 2014 bill has a 50% credit on the sewer portion of the bill, and it applies also to the environmental tax amount, because the environmental tax is predicated on the global bill. So, we adjusted that amount, gave him a 50% credit on the sewer bill, because at the meeting on December 3rd, the record clearly states, where I said, "We know already that his next bill will be affected by this huge leak. Therefore, before that, when the bill is issued, it will contain a credit," because obviously, we knew that it had, the leak problem had affected the new billing cycle, which started October 1st, on or about October 1st, through the end of December. Sure enough, that bill was also a large bill, in excess of $700, and we did afford Mr. Bertomati's account, the 50% credit on the sewer portion of the bill, which is what we do consistently. And obviously, that also impacts the environmental tax, and that is adjusted.
So, what is that amount that he owes?
It was $500, $5.30. That was the mitigated bill for the period ending December 2014. If I may, I have some good news for you. I know that this has been very difficult.
I have the new bill, if that's what you want.
You have it, and it's gone back to...
It's still a little higher, but as you pointed out, with the new baby, it was going to go up. So, from the average of about 100, that we would normally have over the last four years, it's gone up to, I think it's 138, 137 and change.
Which is consistent with more water usage.
Yeah, it's more consistent, and there's no issue with that.
His bill seems to have gone back to normal after the problem was corrected. We knew that the bill for that quarter ending September 2014 would be impacted by the leak. Therefore, before the bill went out, Maria, I had asked Maria, since the issue came to the commission, to basically be on the lookout for it, and go ahead and give the adjustment that we give every other account. There have been, as a matter of fact, there is another situation, which is very similar to what occurred at this property, and...
Can we talk about just this, please?
Yes, sir.
So, in a nutshell?
In a nutshell...
Let me, excuse me.
In a nutshell?
Let me make a further clarification, please. Okay. A quarter has 12 weeks, 12 weeks. We read the meter, I understand, on the 10th, was it not?
September 10th.
September 10th.
And then, I was advised on September 24th.
We caught the fact that there was some sort of traumatic thing happening in Mr. Bertomati's home, and we reported it to Mr. Bertomati on the 24th. So, in other words, that was two weeks, okay? Out of the 14 weeks, there were two, because he fixed it right away. Is that correct, sir?
That same day.
Okay. He used, there was a leakage for two weeks that went undetected. Now, from those 12 weeks, 10 weeks were normal, correct?
We don't know that.
Well, if it was fixed, if it was fixed on the 24th, it appears to me that it's logical that there were 10 weeks that were normal. Is that correct, sir?
Not necessarily.
I don't follow that logic, and I can explain to you why I won't follow that logic, is because if you look at the bill before that, it was $4,800. It was such a large amount. So, if it was fixed on the 24th, it should have the regular consumption. And that's why, as I said earlier, if you take that bill...
I take it back, sir. Let's not discuss that. I take it back, okay? Forget about it.
In a nutshell, in a nutshell, you had a $5,300 water bill. The $4,800 plus the $700. It comes around...
$55.
$55, okay, $55. And it has been mitigated to what, $2,300, $2,400? More or less?
More or less.
And you want more?
I want what logically would follow from the first bill to the second bill. I will pay for the consumption that was part of the second bill.
But there was really no logic here. We acted in good faith, and we saw your situation, you know, and we decided, you know, to, as a courtesy, as a one-time, you know, courtesy to extend, you know, and mitigated it to, I mean, that's almost like 50% of the whole amount.
If I could explain this to you a different way, and maybe, and since it was a few months ago, the water leak happened before the water comes into the house.
Yeah, but one quick question. One quick question. You're an attorney, right?
No, no, excuse me, excuse me. Vice Mayor, with all the respect...
This is clarification. Wait, wait, wait.
Excuse me, let me, let him finish, please.
I think it would help understand. And if it doesn't, it might not, and you can let me know, and maybe I can explain it a different way. The water, the water leak happened before the water comes into the house. The sewer is what comes out. So...
Please, Elliot?
Sorry. Just picking it up.
So, you're, you know, I understand that it was mitigated, and I came here with good faith, but logically, at least to me, water comes in, I'm charged for that water, and I've been charged for that water. And I'm not, I'm not saying that I shouldn't be charged for that water. I understand that the city doesn't have the program that Miami-Dade does. I found that, and I asked, and I was told blankly that it wasn't that. So, I understand that my wife, who's the record owner, and myself, being her husband, need to pay the water. No, there's no discussion about that. But, the water goes into the ground. It never comes out of my house. But now, you're telling me that, you know, you guys, out of good faith, aren't charging me for that. Well, it never came out of my house, so why am I being charged for it at all? And that's what I'm saying. So, what, we're talking about the 12 weeks and the 10 weeks, and I said, "Take my regular consumption. Discount that. I don't mind about the 12 weeks, 10 weeks. Take my regular consumption. I will pay for my regular sewer consumption." It may have been that the problem was fixed on the 24th, but as Ms. Aguilar said, we don't know, and there's no way to measure it. So, what I'm coming here and asking is for the city to do the exact same thing that they did for the first bill. Take my consumption, let me pay for my consumption, and not pay for the rest of the sewer. I think logically, that would wait. The sewer didn't come out of my house. So, the city charging me for that, whether or not the city has to pay that, that's consumption that I'm supposed to be paying for, that wasn't consumed. So, to me, logically, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a discount on the water. I was afforded that, the 10%, and because it was an extraordinary circumstance, that I'm very grateful for, because that didn't need to happen. But, you telling me that I'm grateful for water, not paying for water, for sewer that didn't come out of my house, I'm sorry, I'd have to disagree with you, because I don't think that I'm responsible, or that my wife is responsible for that. So, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm asking. And really and truly, it shouldn't be a large sum, but if it was treated like...
It would be $131, by the way.
I'm sorry?
$131. $131.
Out of the 530. So the bill would come down to 400. I have no issue with that. I have no issue paying that. Ms. Aguilar has been very kind and, and said that we could extend it until September 1st before the, that everything needed to be in before September 1st.
On the past due, on the September 2014 that was mitigated here.
And that's, and that's part of the issue that, that, that we've been going back and forth with is, I'm, I, I want to treat this as one situation, not as one bill and one bill. I thought when I came to, to the commission, and that's our disagreement on what the record said, is that it was treated as two separate situations. This was one leak, one thing. I understand that the bills, you know, the bill cutoff is the bill cutoff. I'm not going to argue that, but it's one situation. I, I thought when I came here that it was going to be taken care of as, as one situation. That's what we're asking for. We're not asking to not pay. As Ms. Aguilar can tell you, I, we've already made $800 payments. Without an agreement being signed, I will continue to make payments. Right now, my wife isn't working. She's home taking care of her child. You know, as, as the money comes in and I'm able to pay for it, I am going to pay for it. I have been paying for it. I'm not asking for any special handout. I'm not asking for anything else. I'm asking for what I think is fair. The 10%, if the, if the city doesn't want to give me in this bill, that's fine. The water consumption, I have to pay for. I, I do want to read that agreement because I think that if the city and, and, and if the city doesn't have that, that kind of agreement where any spillage or any, any leak, they don't get credited, I think that's, that's something the city should work on because it, it would only better the city. The, what I brought up with the, the ordinances, looking at it, if I want, if I wanted to be litigious, which I haven't been and I don't want to be, I, I've lived here four years. You know, we're, we're the type of family the city, I, I think, would want. We moved into an abandoned house. We fixed, we fixed up the house.
Yes.
We, you know, we, we've laid down roots here. I want to be in the city. I like the city. I like the fact that I was, I was out and the police department, you know, I, I called and said, "Look, I'm going to be out a few days. My wife's pregnant. She's going, she's going to be home alone." And they said, "No, don't worry. We can, you know, we can, we can put a watch order on it." I thought that was fantastic, you know? I'm not paying the taxes that I am two blocks in and, and I'm getting much better service. I like, I like it here. I like it here. I want to be treated fairly. I, I'm bringing these issues up because these are issues that if someone didn't have the disposition that I did, could say, "Well, you know what? There's this problem, this problem, this problem, this problem." I'm not bringing up saying that I'm going to do them. All I'm saying is, let me pay what I, what I think is fair. And if, if you agree with me, well, that's, that's fair. That's, that's, that's it. It's, I, I think it's, to me, it's very logical and simple.
Madam, Madam Manager.
Sir?
If you can elaborate. And, and you got the figures? You spoken to him?
Yes.
So what is fair? What would be fair to, to his interpretation?
It is not a, a matter of fair. It is what we have consistently done with other situations that have been very similar or identical to Mr. Bertemati's water account. We have given the residents a 50% on the, on the, as a credit on their sewer bill.
And that was done already?
That was done for the December 2014 bill. Yes, sir. It, it was done. And obviously, the environmental tax was also adjusted to account for those, for those corrections or those adjustments that were made. That's what we have done consistently. Mine, I, I'd like for you to keep something in perspective. In his case, most of the water that came into the property was lost and didn't come out to the sewer line because the leak was huge. But some water does go out. And I want to point you to the fact that Miami-Dade County does not afford us any credits on the, we are considered a volume cost, wholesale customer of Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer. In our agreement with the county, and that was done years ago, even before our time here, it's only been 32 years and for you, Juan, 35 years. There have been no concessions made by the county to afford the city any type of credit for any type of water loss, including our own water lines. And you know we have an issue with the aging system. We are losing 50,000 to 80,000 dollars a year with water leaks citywide. The county does not give us credit for that. They don't give us credit on the sewer portion of the bill because their sewer bill to the city of West Miami, when they bill us, they bill based on that one meter that provides all the volume water in, that, that gets distributed citywide. And we pay sewer. They have a meter also that measures what water is used or, or consumed via their, their sewer system. Correct, Juan?
Yes.
Okay. So there are two meters. We do not have any provisions in these agreements that affords the city of West Miami any type of credit. And we're experiencing that now with our own water losses. We know we are losing water. Still, the city has to pay for that water. So if you're asking me what is fair, I, and, and I know that Mr. Bertemati won't agree with me, but I think we should treat this account the way we have with everyone else. And I think the 50% mitigation, I mean, I think the city was very generous in understanding the issues that Mr. Bertemati and his wife faced with, with this breakage of, of the lines. But I think the city is being very fair.
Okay, just for clarification here. Okay, so he was giving the 50% discount on the sewer and the other environmental taxes?
Environmental tax. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, and then that second quarterly bill that he's responsible for is 500 and...
500 and he, 538.
538.
With 18 cents.
530 with, $530 and 18 cents, yes.
So that is the whole discussion?
That is, that is the...
The whole issue?
Right.
It's moving it from 530 to what I believe is fair of 400.
To 400?
Well, approximately from the math that we've been doing.
Give or take. If you want 100% on the, because you're seeking 100% on the sewer portion of the bill.
Minus whatever, whatever consumption that, that was, that's regularly for the year.
So 438 would be fair to you, Julio?
If that's the, the proper number, I, I think that would work. I don't know be, I, I don't know what the actual bill is and, and Ms. Aguilar and I had had that discussion because I, I was able to get a printout from Maria Fernandez. And as I told Ms. Fernandez, I, I wasn't able to really understand what it was.
Okay, 300 and...
Wait, wait, wait. We need, we, we need Mr. Bertemati a number. Whether or not you think or not think on so and so forth, you and I will have to sit down and execute an agreement that do have, that does have a consideration and that you have said that you will not sign or you will not have your wife sign. So we need something definite so they can reconsider or not reconsider. Because we don't want this happening again.
No, I definitely don't. I'd rather, I'd rather be here under better circumstances. And I'd rather...
Julio, the, the reason I'm going along these lines is because you just mentioned, you know, that you want to live here, that you have ties here, that you want to have your, your family raised here just like I did mine, just like the mayor did, just like Commissioner Rodriguez did. And you know what? That, that's what we want. We want people like you. And you know, the fact that your wife and you have a baby, you know what? I think that we should, you know, reconsider and, and, and extend, you know, a $100 credit.
If, if that's what, what it would be, but my, like...
You've already gotten the 50% on the sewer.
Yeah, my thing would be a, a, a basic formula of consum, uh, regular consumption subtracted from, you know...
But we don't have one. We're just acting in good faith here.
Well, they, they would have it.
No, no, no. I'm sorry, sorry. No, no, no. Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. I am the one that, sir, sir, Elliot, please, okay? I'm the one that has to negotiate an agreement with him and I need a number today. Otherwise, I have to make other recommendations. I need a number now. I don't, I don't need, I don't need for this to go further. Uh, this, as a matter of fact, we're extending something now. And the reason for the new ordinance that I drafted is to reaffirm that what had been the policy for many years. So in order for, not to have any misunderstanding in the future, so everybody understands that what happens, that their home is their responsibility, whether it goes out into the house or not, okay? So, but I need something in writing. I need something definite. And I need something that, that would tell me what happens if you reach a number and Mr. Bertemati does not want to execute the contract later on.
Julio, how's 435 sound?
I'm sorry. Is that the only...
Just, just to get out of your ear and, because I don't have any.
Wait, wait, wait. One at a time. I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, that I interrupt you. You asked a question.
I, I agreed.
Okay, you agree. Okay.
That way...
We have a motion. Do I have a motion? No, wait a minute. Let me, excuse me, sir.
I have a motion.
Let me have a clarification because I don't know what the motion is. Mr. Bertemati, except for the number, are you willing to, is your client willing to execute the contract that I send you? Yes or no?
There's other provisions in there that we need to work on.
Well, sir, then I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I cannot accept that.
Julio, what I spoke first?
You know, if I'm not told what is it exactly, we're going to be here next month, okay? I need to find out exactly what is it that we have an objection. I have, if you want to take a few minutes, sir, I have a copy of the agreement here. You tell me what it is that you want.
I provided you a redline copy of, of...
No, sir, I don't want a redline copy. You see, I'm not supposed to do this for you. I don't work for you. I work for the city. You see, this has taken the city time and I charge the city for this. You know, I am not going to go to your redline. If you want to say what do you object in this contract, please take a few minutes and we'll go out to other issues.
I've done that.
Sir, just go ahead and tell the commission so the commission can take a vote right now.
Do we have, do we have the redline contract or whatever it was redlined?
It's not acceptable to him. It's not acceptable to me, his redline. We are under no obligation to go until September. This is only a, as a matter of courtesy to Mr. Bertemati and his wife.
Mr. Attorney, can you, you said September. Clarify. What do you mean by September?
The extension, the payment, the monthly payment until September.
Okay, all right.
The monthly payment of the $1,800.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about.
I would advise you, Mr. Bertemati, to take a few minutes. You go back and we'll go to other business and you come back and you tell the commission.
I can hand you, I can hand you and if, if, I can hand whoever it is a copy of what all my discussions were with you. I, I don't understand why this is now an issue that you want me to...
Sir, you stake, I object, yes, because I want to find out exactly.
I provided that to you.
Sir? I want you to tell the commission.
I, I can. I have, I have a copy here.
Uh, I'm not going to discuss this anymore, Mr. Attorney.
Madam, Madam Manager.
May I clarify something? The, the September 2014 bill is the bill that was mitigated and allowed for a structured payment or monthly installment or lump sum amounts to be paid on or before September 1st, 2015, before the end of the fiscal year. I have gone back and looked at that portion of the tape, which we have provided as well to Mr. Bertemati. And the attorney has reviewed the tape and so has the clerk. So the, just to give you a, a, a recollection of what your motion was, your motion was to mitigate the original bill, which was in the amount of $4,890. You brought it down to 1, 1,801 dollars with the opportunity of a payment plan via a promissory note slash agreement to be paid on or before September 1st, 2015, provided that the current bills remain paid separate and apart from this agreement. So the current bills must be kept up to date in order for us to be able to continue honoring the agreement. That was, was what came before the city commission and we've reviewed the tape.
In other words, I would have to pay this 435 by a set date, which was...
The set date was January 31st.
And, and, and to that, to that extent, and one of the things that, and Ms. Aguilar and I, and she, she reminded me, and that's how she put it, that it was a reminder that my water, that if I didn't pay the amount, which was at that point was 530, that my water could be shut off. I didn't take that well. I really didn't because I'm like...
Well, I didn't take that well that you went ahead and told me that we were jacking, using other language, okay?
Because you are and you are right now.
Well, sir, let me tell you something.
Listen, listen, listen. Ah, wait, listen, listen. You're the attorney. I know you're acting as an attorney, but I'm the mayor. So we're not going to discuss this anymore because this is not going to get anywhere.
Let me, let me suggest this.
One statement that I want to make.
Let me suggest this, please. Let me suggest this, please, please.
Yes, yes.
Let me read you the one liner, the one page that I have drafted. And I'd like to find out whether Mr. Bertemati is in agreement with what I have written, okay?
Yes, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Attorney, very simple.
I'm going to ask Julio a question. It's black and white, okay? Whatever it is that you are discussing with him about disagreements or agreements on this point and that point, you know, to us is negligible, okay? We don't care about that. What we care is that you agree 100% on, on what I'm going to ask you. Do you agree to pay the $435?
Yes.
And do you agree to continue paying the $1,800 that you owe? And I think you have till September to pay?
Yes, and I have...
That's black and white.
And I've started making those payments.
And whatever it is that he's complaining about or it's, it's, as, as a city attorney is concerning him, I don't, I don't want him, I don't want him to be concerned because that is his job. He's supposed to take care of the city. And whatever it is that's bugging him, it's got to be for a reason. I know you wrote some provisions there. That's when I first spoke out. I, I said that, you know, we acted in good faith and it's black and white. You know, we, we don't care about this provision and that provision, if this, if that.
But part of it is the timing, though. The part, part of it is the timing because the, the 1,800 was agreed to September 1st. And with Ms. Aguilar, my understanding, like I told you...
So you want the 435 included in the 1,800?
And I will keep making payments.
And you will keep making that payment, but the contention, the contention is that the agreement was made if the, if the, if the bills were current. And because of this $535 bill, it's not current.
And there's a $138 bill that is now due by April 30th that, that I will pay on time. I can even pay, I can even make that payment tomorrow. It's, it's not a, that's not a problem and I agreed to that with Ms. Aguilar.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Is there anything outstanding that hasn't been discussed right here tonight? Any other bills outstanding?
I don't know that the gentleman is going to sign the agreement that on behalf of the city I have prepared.
I'm going, I'm going to address that.
Okay. If he wants to, for me to change the numbers, because you all decided it, I'll be happy to change the number. But if I don't know that the agreement is not going to be executed, you ought to know that I have to notify that to the city manager.
Okay.
And the city manager has to take action according to what she wants. As a matter of fact, let me tell you something. We have given due process to this particular case. Whether or not you're called Water Board of City Commission, this is due process, which is required, number one. Number two, there's consideration. The amount of water that we gave in and the amount of water that was dispersed, that is consideration. So I think to have this nitty gritty, and I don't like this word or I don't like the other word, I just want to find out precisely what is it here that he is not willing to sign. Otherwise, this is for not. You're wasting your time, okay?
Okay, so...
Go ahead, go ahead and then, then I'll, I'll, I'll continue. Go ahead.
The current water bills are not paid. Current bills, forgetting the problem bills.
The current bill is, has just been mailed. So there's a window of time for, for the Bertemati family to pay that current bill, which has gone back to normal based on what I saw.
Perfect.
There is the old past due amount and there's now another past due amount.
The 530, the 530, okay.
Which we need to resolve. And, and, and the reason why I very, I, I made a very friendly reminder to Mr. Bertemati is because I have a duty to tell you that we can't let these bills sit in an aging type of account without a disconnection because we would be in violation of our own law, of our own ordinance. And I put it very softly because I understand the challenges that you have had with this situation. It was not threatening in any way, shape or form. We have been extremely, I, I, I think we've been very communicative with you. I, I believe our office is really bent over backwards to assist you. I mean, I sent you an email last night from my home because I wanted to follow, pardon?
It was at 8:04 PM. It was, yeah, it was definitely past hours.
Right.
And...
And, and I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. What I'm trying to say is that the city has shown good faith all along in trying to assist you and I know how unfortunate this is.
And I believe we have as well.
I have a duty to disclose to you process. Believe me, I don't like to tell anybody that the city is looking to disconnect water service because everybody has a different set of circumstances.
And I came here in good faith and I, and, and the agreement to pay that money is in good faith. But for the, for the attorney, the city attorney to come into, are you going to...
Mr. Bertemati, with all due respect, let me finish my statement. Let me finish my, my...
And, and, and then I'm going to be last and I, I'm going to, after you do that, for everybody on, you know, I'm going to speak last and, and that's it.
Perfect. This is what I like to suggest to the board, okay? You want to take, you... You want to take, you, the eighteen hundred dollars, you've already got, have an agreement to pay it through September, said date in September.
September first.
You want to add this new bill to that payment plan.
The four thirty-five, if that's where it's agreed on.
Okay, if we're, if we're gonna give you until that time, you're not getting the hundred dollar credit. You're gonna pay the five thirty up until September, okay? And you're gonna sit with the attorney tonight before this meeting ends, and you guys are gonna decide whatever this contract is that is in disagreement, because we need in this tonight, here tonight.
I have no problem.
It's gotta be over.
I have no problem.
So if you want us to give you to September thirtieth, to include this second...
No, September, September first.
September first, whatever this second bill is, you want, if you want to extend that payment, you want to include that in the payment plan, you're not getting a hundred dollar credit. We'll give you the extension, this is my suggestion. We will give you the extension to include this five thirty new bill in the original payment plan that we decided long ago, that there's some discussion, some disagreement as to he said, she said, I understand, she understood, that was decided. So let's put this five thirty in the payment plan, the original payment plan, which is what you want to do, you want to make it one, let's make it one. Put the five thirty in the eighteen hundred, give it to September first, you and the attorney decide what this legal thing is, because I have no idea what le, what's going on with the legality of that. You decide tonight before it's over, and this is done.
There's, if, if I, if I decide to take the hundred dollar credit, does that bill become due?
It's due now.
Due, uh, well...
It's due now.
It's after hours, it's due tomorrow.
It's due tomorrow.
So I have to come up with...
Because it's past due, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
It's past due, so it's due by end of business day tomorrow. So take that hundred dollar credit, pay the past due bill by end of business day tomorrow, or bulk it all in one, like you want it to do, make it one, and pay it by said date in September.
And talk to the attorney.
And talk to the attorney. And in the legal quarrel you two have, the two lawyers, you guys work that out tonight.
There you go, Jacob, come on, lady.
That sounds solomonic to me.
And that's it, but now the mayor, I mean, that's my suggestion to make, to make everybody happy, but now the mayor obviously needs to...
I need from the commission exactly what is it that you want me to do.
Exactly what you said.
Excuse me, in, in how much payment, how much money payment a month you're going to accept.
Once a...
It's a five hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, one hundred dollars. I need to know exactly. I don't want to be sitting at a table with someone that thinks that he can use a certain language that I certainly don't like.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Attorney, please, please, please. You, okay, I learned something from you a long time ago. Uh, like, let's make this work, okay? Let's make this work, I, you know...
Give me the numbers, please.
Okay.
I'll be very happy to work it out, give me the numbers.
Okay.
I think it comes out to four sixty-seven a month.
How much, sir?
Four sixty-seven, or four seventy, Madam Manager.
I'm running some numbers for you, we have to take into consideration what he has paid already, so...
He has paid eight hundred dollars?
I, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sure. Okay, let's, let's take it...
I have, I have the numbers.
Mr. Attorney, can we take a five minute break, or...
Go ahead.
Okay. We're taking a five minute break.
That's about six. I think it's six. Less than four month old baby that I, I, I don't get to spend time with, because I'm here, and not that you guys are not pleasant, but...
Or you said we did, we were.
I said not that, that you guys are not, not, not that you guys aren't not pleasant, but...
We, 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 we're back.
But I like my daughter a little bit better.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, come on, we gotta respect the mayor here, Saman, so, listen. This is, this is what I think we should do, okay? I think we should not continue discussing any, any legal documentation, or whatever we're talking about, and, you know, we're pretty much over here not attorneys, so we rely on attorneys. I think that the essence of the problem here has to do with the money, the money issue, and the payments, and so on, so why don't we discuss that on the record? And that way, it's on the record, we're gonna have minutes, it's gonna, on the record. Whether, whether, you know, the, there's an agreement, you know, back and forth, I personally don't want to hear about it. I think this is the venue, it's on the record, you know, we'll discuss tonight, as the Vice Mayor said, you know, that the, the, here, here's the number, and then we have till a certain time to, to make the payments, and, and, and that will become part of the record, and if you're in agreement with that, let's move forward, and let's, let's, let's stop arguing back and forth, and, because we're not gonna get anywhere.
A quick statement here.
Yes.
I, I believe, I believe what Julio is alluding to, that he's in disagreement with, are the provisions our city attorney is adding to, to the contract, and that is his duty to, to do that. For instance, like if he doesn't pay, for whatever reason, and there's gotta be a consequence. So that is what he is, the provision that he is putting in the contract, and I believe that is what Julio is alluding to, that he is not in agreement with. So it's not so much the figure that is at argument here, but the provisions that our city attorney has to, by, by duty, representing the city and protect the city, has to have in this contract. And Julio, you, you need to understand that he needs to do that, it, with an overabundance of caution, with whatever happens, as a city attorney representing a municipality, he needs to have those provisions.
Yes, he...
And, and, and yes, you're gonna pay, there's not gonna be an issue, but nonetheless, you have to agree to those provisions, because, you know, we're not, this is a city, this is a municipality, you're not dealing with, with me personally, or someone else. You, you're dealing with the seventy-five hundred residents that we have in the city, and they all pay taxes, and they all pay for the water, you know, so...
My, my issue...
Am I right, Mr. Attorney?
Let me say something. The city attorney will tell you precisely what he have told you before. There's really no need for a promissory note. If they don't pay, you have remedies. You cut the water, or you put a lien in the house. Number two, if you reach an agreement that they're gonna pay X amount a month, and they don't pay, again, the administration will do as the administration does in every other case. So I would recommend that you listen to the city manager, and the city manager will make a recommendation, which does not have to be reduced in writing, does not, because the record speaks for itself. It's either this is the way it's gonna happen, or not, period, there's no third position. So I would respectfully request that you listen to the city attorney for her recommendation.
City manager.
And, I'm sorry, city manager.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Thank you, I got promoted or demoted, I don't know. Depends how you look at it, okay? To make this equitable for everyone, and if you're all going to entertain the recommendation made by Commissioner Rodriguez, not to extend the payment to be paid on or before September first, twenty fifteen, and include the December twenty fourteen quarterly bill, and taking into account what the, Mr. Bertemati and his wife have paid, you're talking about a balance of one thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars divided equally into six months, gives us an amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixteen, sixteen cents to be paid in monthly installments. Failure to comply with this agreement, should this be your, your vote tonight?
This is not an agreement, this is a recommendation.
I'm sorry, my recommendation, that you will act upon tonight, then if, if there is failure to honor the agreement, then obviously...
No agreement, no agreement.
I'm sorry, again, to, to, to act on this recommendation, if there, if the customer in this case fails to comply with what has been approved, or will be approved this evening, obviously, as Mr. Villalobos says, there are consequences, there's water disconnection or play, placement of the lien. Unfortunately, I have to bear the bad news. No one likes to hear that, but it's obviously something that we have to be accountable to the auditors as well. So six equal monthly installments would be my recommendation, if you decide to leave the December, I'm telling you, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and...
Sixteen cents.
Sixteen cents.
Plus June?
In addition to that, all bills for the quarter ending March thirtieth, the next quarter ending June thirtieth, and the other quarter ending September thirtieth, must be kept current, and all the bills thereafter.
Let's, can we remove September thirtieth, because the, the, the total would be paid prior to...
On or before September first, and hopefully, this is an issue at that point.
And my only, if I can add to her recommendation, which I have no problem with, much better worded than the agreement that nobody wants to see, if I could have it paid on the fifteenth, I think that, I think if that, if that's okay with the city, so it would be...
You mean change September first, or...
No, no, I'm sorry.
What are you changing?
It would be...
I would...
April, May, June, July, August.
September.
So, no, then that would be five payments. So it would be before September first.
April first, May first, June first...
Yes, no, I'm sorry, she's completely correct.
July first, August first, and September first.
The only addition would be since today, April first, that the March payment be allowed to be paid by, by Monday, just because I'll probably have to mail it in, I won't be able to come into the city tomorrow. I can try to get my, since, it's after April first, that's, and I don't think that's asking too much, the April, the April first payment of this agreement, the two fifty-five, sixteen, would be due by, today's the... By the sixth, or, or I can try to do it tomorrow, I just don't know if I will physically be able to make it into it.
Let's, well, we, we do have a, a mail shoot on the side door.
If I can drop it off?
You can drop it off on your way to work tomorrow.
I can do that tomorrow.
If we can stay with the, with the agreement, I would encourage you to, to approve this recommendation to the mayor and city commissioners. Otherwise, if we can, if you want to move the date to the fifth of the month of each month, we could do that as well.
That, that's, I, I have no, I'm sorry to interrupt, the...
That's fine.
If I can do it by handing it in, and am I not getting, because I know you, the city's gonna be closed on Friday.
Yes, sir.
So...
But you can put your payment on...
Yeah, I can put it in tomorrow, and that would be the only exception to what she said that I, that I have an issue with.
Okay, um, if we're in agreement, I need a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay? State the, state the, for the record, state the...
State the, state the, uh, for the record, state the agreement, please.
The agreement is the recommendation by the city manager.
The motion...
And you can all watch the tape.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the city manager.
To divide the past due amount which some has been paid into it, and there's a balance of one thousand one dollars, add the five hundred and thirty dollars to that, which gives you a total of one thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars, divided into six equal payments, starting on April first, 2015, to be paid in full by September first, 2015, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents. With the condition that all current, all bills must be, that are current, must be paid within the window of time allotted by the city, which is a thirty-five day window from the date that the, the, um, bill is mailed.
And if not, like any time else you don't pay a bill, you lose the service.
There are consequences, right.
Loss of service and, uh, and...
And all liens.
Whatever the consequences are for that bill.
The rights, the rights the city has, uh, and I never, I never had an issue with any of that. I think that's, I think that's a fair compromise.
He needs a motion. Motion, there's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
No, 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 please.
No, no, I, no, no, I'm sorry. Elliot.
See, citizen presentation.
Yeah, we're in citizen...
Presentation.
There's something I need to say, I'm sorry, in a calm, quiet manner, and I would hope that, oh, he already left.
Elliot, uh, please keep it simple, we, we have not started the agenda.
I will keep it very simple, okay? Elliot Asbell, one five three four five, Southwest Seventy-seventh Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida.
Our sixth commissioner.
Three three one five seven. With all due respect to the citizen, the dais, the attorney, the manager, staff, and administration, for the future, when someone comes before you in an admission, and the council should know this, when someone comes before you looking for remediation, that is a plea. I am bringing a plea to the commission. Whether he's the attorney or a pope, and this attorney is here to represent you and advise you as relates to legalities. A plea should never, and this commission should never, tolerate an adversarial position. Issue one, issue two, issue three, issue four, ridiculous. You've bent over backwards to begin with, you have bent even further, and still, there is this pious attitude with disrespect for a senior, which we all were raised to respect our seniors, and disrespect from a professional to another professional. This is not a court proceeding, this is not an adversarial proceeding, it's a plea.
Thank you. Next item, please, uh, eleven B, please.
Yes, now, uh, item ten, unfinished business, no, none.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under new business agenda items, item eleven B, veto violation report by the office of the city clerk in reference to demolition, removal, and disposal of existing residential structures for the city of West Miami, B. And to the mayor and members of the city commission on March sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the bid, uh, for the demolition, removal, and disposal of existing residential structures, bid was open publicly, and two bids were received, as follows. Uh, a bid by the BG Group in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, and from Chin Diesel Inc. in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The, the purpose of this is to clear way of the property that we bought for the park at the Garden Club Park. There's a structure on there that is no use to us, and we need to demolish it along with another structure we have behind my building, which, uh, we will no longer need also. So we went out for bids and we received two bids. Uh, the lowest bid, which is twenty-three, three, thirteen seventy-five, is from Chin Diesel. And we have checked their references and everything checks out with very good compliments of them. And all we need is a resolution to go ahead and proceed.
Okay, any questions? Uh, Madam Manager, make it quick, please.
The funding's from the impact fees.
That was my question, thank you.
Okay, so any questions for, uh, uh, Mr. Pennon?
Chin Diesel, one, the, uh...
Yes, there was a low bidder.
Motion.
Okay.
We have to read the item.
Uh, oh, I thought you didn't, yeah.
No, I didn't. Item eleven C, resolution of the city of West Miami approving the administration's award recommendation of a bid solicitation to Chin Diesel Inc. for a contract amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand three hundred thirteen and seventy-five cents for a project titled demolition, removal, and disposal of existing structures. Bid number two thousand and fifteen, three sixteen, twenty fifteen, for the demolition of certain city of West Miami properties located at eleven twenty-one, twenty-nine, I'm sorry, Southwest Sixty-sixth Avenue, uh, West Miami, Florida, and sixty-one, sixty-one Southwest Ten Street, West Miami, Florida, authorizing the city manager or his/her designee to execute a contract on the terms and other provisions contained therein, providing for an effective date by mayor and city commission.
And if you would add to be paid from the...
From impact fees.
Park, park impact fees.
And also, both structures are city properties, so...
Both of them are city properties, and we would report, um, to the insurance company so that we don't have to pay a premium on these buildings and save some money until, until construction takes place.
You have a motion and a second.
Okay, can you call the, the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez have the vote, Commissioner Blanca, Vice Mayor Blanes, Mayor Mujina, four zero, item passes.
I swear you read this resolution, anyway, I gotta watch the tape. It's been a long night, I'm serious, I'm serious. I thought you read the resolution already, I think you read it twice. Yes, okay, all right.
I made my report, but I didn't read the resolution.
Item D and E, I request that we, uh, postpone to the May sixth meeting.
Which, which item?
D and E.
May, six.
May sixth.
May sixth.
Okay, do we, we need to take a motion on this, Mr. Attorney, or anything?
To postpone.
Huh?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to postpone.
To postpone to May sixth.
Okay, I need a second, all in favor say aye. Next item?
Item eleven F, first reading, this is an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami prohibiting the parking of any automobiles, vessels, or any other conveyances in grassy areas in front and side setbacks of any property, prohibiting...
Sports, sports equipment.
Sports equipment of any kind and off-ground pools in grassy areas and front and side setbacks of any property. Establishing that failure to abide to this ordinance shall be a violation of the code of ordinances, establishing fines for violation of this ordinance, provide for codification, provide for an effective date by mayor and city commission. This is the first reading, no discussion.
Madam, Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Since this is the first reading, and, um, you know, there's no discussion, uh, what I suggest is that, uh, we further, uh, in the future, after this meeting, meet with the, uh, city attorney and the, uh, city manager, uh, to discuss this. And then at the next meeting, we'll have plenty of discussion about it, and we'll tweak it, and, and hopefully approve something that we can legislate to improve the quality of life of all the residents of, of West Miami. So I make a motion, uh, on this, uh, item.
Yes.
And it's just the first reading, so there's never any discussion in the first reading.
Thank you, I, I think it's an excellent idea, Vice Mayor.
I need a second.
The city manager wants to say something.
May I? Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, we discussed, I, I think I, when we met, we talked about this item this afternoon. I met with the vice mayor in the morning, and I don't know if this would be the appropriate time...
Can we, can we, can we leave it so everybody...
There's one problem. If you advertise the heading of the ordinance in the fashion that it is presented, then we have to, uh, you know, we gotta keep the language the way it is, and it may pose a problem for this.
You may amend it, uh, let's keep on going.
Okay, per our discussions, we talked about the possibility, Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor...
Read the whole thing and, uh, so...
Okay, it would be, um, if we, if we can have the clerk read the first, uh, the heading of the ordinance, I'll tell you where we have a potential problem, where we may have a potential problem. It's up to the commission.
Okay, no, 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 go ahead, go ahead and read it.
It needs to be advertising the correct way.
It has to be advertised properly, yeah, so, so I, I understand what the manager said.
So, Madam Manager, how, you want me to read and, and as I go, you suggest the language?
I'll, I'll...
Okay, you can read it.
First reading, an ordinance of the mayor, this is, okay, of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami prohibiting the parking of any automobiles, vessels, or any other conveyances in grassy areas and front and side setbacks of any property, prohibiting sports equipment of any kind and off-ground pools in grassy areas and front and side setbacks of any property. Establishing that failure to abide by this ordinance shall be a violation of the code of ordinances, establishing fines for violation of this ordinance, provide for codification, provide for effective date. I have a suggestion, um, because, my suggestion would be to eliminate the portion of the, of the heading of the ordinance that reads, "The parking of any automobiles, vessels, or any other conveyances in grassy areas and front and side setbacks of any property."
I agree.
And also, instead of, uh, labeling the off-ground pools, I would label that portion to read above-ground swimming pools. Let me give you a brief explanation as to why I recommend eliminating these, these, um, this sent, or this portion of the heading. The, the east side of the city does not have curbs, and the interpretation of this ordinance may result in loss of parking in the public right-of-way because these are known as green grassy areas. And so it may actually hurt residents who live on the east side. I think we should keep the heading of the ordinance simple to read, "First reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami..."
Prohibiting sports equi...
For prohibiting sports equipment of any kind and above-ground swimming pools in grassy areas and in front and side setbacks of any property, establishing that failure to abide by this ordinance shall be a violation of the code of ordinances, establishing fines for violation of the ordinance, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
And again, uh, I need to add my two cents.
Yes.
The, where it says, "In grassy areas, in front and side setbacks," no, just in front setbacks.
In front setbacks.
Because, uh, corner lots have two front yards, and they're allowed to use their, their side yard.
So, strikeout, side.
In both areas where it mentions side setbacks, just leave front setbacks.
That's correct.
Can I, can I interject here, and I, Mr. Attorney, I'm gonna ask for your advice because, and that's why I didn't want anybody to talk about it, because we're not supposed to discuss on first reading. But by changing the language, I think it's taking a little bit of the essence of what's supposed to be discussed. I think perhaps the issue is not grassy area, but the issue is parking over the curb. That's what I think.
No, sir.
By striking this out, uh, I think...
The way that the, uh, the way that the ordinance was drafted was the way that the vice mayor requested.
Correct.
So if the vice mayor entertains a friendly amendment, I'd be very happy to, uh, redact it and, uh, bring it out again to you.
It's parking over the curb, I don't think it's a grassy area. Everybody, when you don't have a curb, it's a different issue than when you have a curb.
Mr. Mayor.
There's also, there's al, already a, an ordinance that addresses curbs. So that was passed in two thousand and thirteen, I believe that it was in, uh, May two thousand and thirteen, is that correct, sir?
Correct.
So there's already an ordinance addressing parking over curbs or, uh, going over curbs at any point.
And this is for restrictions on private property, not on public right-of-way?
Vice Mayor, you, you brought it up, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify.
My, my only two contentions here, and what I want to focus on is primarily the two issues of not allowing residents to have sports equipment, playground equipment, pools, or, you know, the things of this nature in front of their house where we do not allow parking to begin with. You know, in West Miami, you cannot park your vehicle in front of your lawn, right? So it, it, what I wanna do is, is, is not allow anyone to have swing sets or pools, or, or any things of this nature where, uh, you know, the, the, the right place for this type of, uh, of equipment is in the backyard, not the front yard. So, and, and, and that's basically, basically it.
Okay, my suggestion then would be, sir, that, uh, for us to be allowed to, uh, redact the, uh, the heading of the ordinance and bring it back to, uh, discuss it with the vice mayor, before bringing it to you, again. Is that correct, sir?
Well, I mean, if we can all just agree that we wanna just focus on what I've just spoke of.
And I know this is an, an item that we discussed...
I'm not talking anymore, 'cause we're not supposed to discuss.
Well, if we're working on the heading, if we're working on the heading of the ordinance, we need to advertise it appropriately, and that's what we're trying to achieve here to accommodate everybody's requests. We need to also talk about basketball. Are we going to prohibit basketball?
That, okay. I, I, let's go back to what the city attorney suggested. We're discussing this, and we don't supposed to be discussing first reading, aye?
That's why.
So then we can defer it.
Defer the item.
Defer the item.
Motion to defer the item.
Second.
Until...
We will bring you back a heading on, a revision, a revision for your consideration.
Okay? Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item. By the way, no discussion on the next item, okay? All right, go ahead and read it.
Item eleven G, first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami ratifying existing responsibilities of maintenance of the water distribution system of the city of West Miami Water and Sewer System. Reaffirming the existing policies of the city of West Miami as to the responsibility of breakage and plumbing failure inside of property line. Reaffirming the existing policy and further clarifying the mitigation program in cases of excess consumption, plumbing and line failure inside private property line, providing for codification and providing for an effective date by mayor and city commission.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes, and this item would be advertised, uh, due to Good Friday. Uh, the newspapers, they changed the advertisement requirements, so we either, uh, have this item in the April fifteenth meeting or May sixth, uh, as the newspaper allowed.
You, you're not gonna have time for the April fifteenth?
Probably, probably not, if, depending on the newspaper, I will contact that, contact them tomorrow.
You have to, you have to announce a time certain for the item to come back on a public hearing.
May sixth, I mean, to be certain, May sixth, for sure. So public hearing will be advertised for May sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven thirty.
Okay, next item?
Item H, report by the office of the city clerk in reference to the decision made by the city commission in reference to the use of the community center as fall-in-place. This item was, uh, requested, uh, for reconsideration by Commissioner, uh, Ronda Rodriguez and, uh, members of the city commission, mayor and members of the city commission, after the March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, denied by the majority of this commission to allow the use of the community center as a fall-in-place. Commissioner Rodriguez requested reconsideration of the issue. And in compliance with, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, I was in contact with the elections department. I spoke with John Mendez, the deputy supervisor of operations, I spoke with Sayda Reyes, and they assured me that they were issuing a report of the, all the facts that were necessary to, I mean, for a response. Uh, after that, um, uh, we, uh, this morning, since we had a meeting and we haven't, uh, had a response yet from the elections department, the city manager... had a response yet from the elections department, the city manager, myself, and the, and Vice Mayor, we contacted the elections department, and we spoke with the polling place manager, uh, Erika Sierra Trujillo, and, uh, and we requested a response as to what was the, the reason why the elections department was, uh, not using other venues, or what was, uh, the response. And we learned, first of all, we learned that the original request for the use of the community center as a polling place was an alternate, uh, for, was for, for an alternate voting location. We didn't know that, and they didn't say that, and we learned that today. So, uh, because they were doing that during a representing exercise, so, uh, as, um, and we learned also that Flagami Elementary was, uh, granted, uh, granting the permission for the use of the, of their school as a, as a voting location, so the community center is no longer needed as a polling place. Um, also, in the course of our conversation, we requested, uh, relocation of two precincts. Uh, West Miami, uh, precincts are the precincts to 426 and 427, and we requested to relocate those precincts to the, the city of West Miami, uh, multipurpose facility, the Rebecca Sosa Building. And, uh, and we were advised, this afternoon, I was advised by Carolina Lopez, the government affairs supervisors, that the operations staff is working on our request to move all, all voters from precincts 426 and 427 to the Rebecca Sosa multipurpose facility. Also, they requested, and they were seeking approval of, uh, for the use of the multipurpose facility as a, um, as a.
Early voting.
Early voting site, and I, uh, sent a message requesting this afternoon also, this is, this has been a pretty busy afternoon, also requesting a schedule of all the dates that they need, and we requested it in advance because we know that we have summer camp, we have, uh, spring break, and, uh, we don't want the early voting process to be interfering with, uh, our, uh, our activities. So, I'm waiting for Carolina Lopez's, uh, response as, as of now, so I'll follow up on her response as soon as I receive it.
Carolina responded, I, uh, she did. And, uh, she's working on a, a, a calendar, and we've asked for at least a 12-month calendar for early election, early, early voting and election day. Um, the site, so, so that you understand, and it's not necessary to, to bring it to a vote, because the Rebecca Sosa multipurpose facility is already.
An approved.
An approved site for precinct 428. So, if they can consolidate those three precincts in that one large facility, then, then we have everything that we need covered, and obviously, the parking and the accommodations there are, are better. Um, you know, you have our commitment that we will work to make sure that the kids, um, stay within the other half of the building, possibly outdoors, entertaining field trips on those days for early voting during that summer break time.
If I may, Ms. Mayor, since that issue came out before the commission before, and there was a discussion, and there was a motion, and, uh, there might be a change, uh, a motion for reconsideration would be appropriate at this point, uh, because we're not gonna take any action today, I would respectfully request that, uh, the right to, uh, have a motion for reconsideration, uh, be extended until, uh, whatever time, uh, that we have a definite result.
Okay, so, so.
A motion for reconsideration.
At a later date.
At a later date, yes.
Uh, motion was made by Commissioner Blanca.
By Ms. Agar, I see you shaking your head and.
You don't need a, uh, I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, Mr. Villalobos, precinct, the Rebecca Sosa multipurpose facility is already a voting precinct. What the elections department is trying to accomplish via our request through the clerk's office to their department is to incorporate 426 and 427, which are the two West Miami voting precincts, to that one site, which is already an established voting facility, and it houses precinct 428, which is the unincorporated, unincorporated area of Miami-Dade County that already votes there.
Okay, I understand that, but from a legal point of view, there's a reasoning that.
My point is this, Madam Manager, should there be any changes, the right to recall it would be preserved, period. If there's no changes, there's no need for any further discussion.
Okay.
But should there be any changes in the future, since we already voted that we didn't want it here, that right will be preserved, okay? So, there's no change.
All right, so what is it, uh, we have to do?
Just simply extend it to the following, if we need it.
I made the motion already.
To extend the reconsideration to a, to a later date?
Yes.
As, uh.
Should we need it?
Should we need it?
As always, with an overabundance of caution from our city attorney, uh, I second the motion.
I, I have just a clarification.
Yes.
We're not reconsidering the.
The use of the community center, what original.
That's, that's, that's over and done with, they have determined.
We voted on the, the, the community center. That's done, we're not changing that.
Yeah.
This is something completely different, so I'm not sure we're.
Well, then, I didn't understand it, I mean, uh, you, you vote the way that you feel that you ought to vote. Uh, my, my, what I'm trying to do is preserve your right to change anything, should there be any changes, period. If there's no changes, there's no problem.
Yeah, he, he doesn't foresee anything happening, but just to give.
Just in case, okay. So, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And, Mr. Mayor, can, can I say that this decision, uh, would be very favorable to all the residents of West Miami as they get to vote within the city of West Miami, you know, before we're voting outside?
At the open municipal temple.
Now, we all get to vote within our, our boundaries, so, you know, it's a win-win for everyone, the parking is better, the accommodation is better, uh.
And we're not inconvenienced in the, the city citizens?
No, no, as we discussed, uh, e- everything can be accommodated.
It never made sense to me why other, other residents of other municipalities of the county were, were voting in our city, and we were voting outside of our city. I never understood that, so this makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
Bringing it back home.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, but my ADD is kicking in. Can we move along from the rest of the items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I need to have dinner. So, um, item aye, please.
Yes, uh, item I is ratification of the closing of City Hall on April 3rd, 2015, as customary and observance of Good Friday.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Item J, discussion in reference to Fourth of July event by Mayor Mojina, 2015, by Mayor Mojina.
I yield to the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, as previously discussed under the city manager's report, the city has an amount of $4,750, which starts to address the Fourth of July event, if it is the wish of this commission to, uh, have a Fourth of July event. We can work out the details later, but I need some marching orders and instructions on whether you would like to have a Fourth of July event. We will meet with you as you chair that committee, Mr. Mayor, and we will determine the scope of, of the Fourth of July activities. I'm, um, gonna remind you that Fourth of July this year, we would look at the calendar, falls on a Saturday, that is a long weekend. We have to take all things into consideration because if you have a long weekend, usually people leave town, that is a fact of life.
And we're off on Friday.
And we are off on Friday, the 3rd, so any work in preparation of that has to be paid at time and a half to employees, which is going to, uh, increase the cost of the event. Therefore, I bring this for your consideration.
Think about it, uh, as, as chair of this committee, uh, it is my duty to bring it to the table. Uh, I know customary, we have done the Fourth of July, uh, but, uh, there's, there's many things, as, as the manager said, uh, they're not working the day before, uh, this will cost overtime. Um, we had several events for the city of West Miami, and I'm one that I wanna have events for the city of West Miami, but, uh, you know, uh, remember, we're gonna have, uh, the lighting of the trees ceremony pretty soon, and do we have anything in between?
No.
It all depends.
No, I, I, I'm asking, because I might have forgotten something.
And, and, and I know you wanted to bring another arts festival back to the agenda, so, you know, we, we have to, in anticipation of all these events, we need to definitely address these issues, and the timing is of essence on every single one of these events.
So, I, that's why I wanna bring it for discussion before we embark in, in, in this. So, any, any comments, any suggestions, any?
Sponsors, will, will we have sponsors?
We will send sponsor letters out, obviously, the mayor will sign those letters inviting our sponsors to take part.
Which I'm embarrassed to, to write, to, 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 to sign those letters again, I mean, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, but Fourth of July, Fourth of July.
So, anyway. What was that again?
We always manage.
Yes.
We always manage.
Didn't we just bring it back, wasn't this last one, the first one we had after it was, after we didn't have.
No, two years ago.
No.
So, we had two.
We had two so far.
I hate to see it suspended again, so, I mean, let's think about it, let's.
The one issue that concerns me is the long weekend, and we saw this, it was evident in the Easter egg hunt this year, because of the two weeks of spring break for parochial slash private schools and Miami-Dade County public school schedule, we saw less of a crowd at the Easter egg hunt, and so, timing is very important here, so that the greater majority of, of the residents do participate in the event. So, I just caution you, this is a Saturday, uh, Fourth of July, you have, um, overtime expenses, and you have a long weekend, and you may fall short of meeting your expectations in ter- in terms of attendance.
Tell you what, uh, why, why don't we do that? Let's, let's, let's think about it, let's, you know, defer this item, so, but really think about it, really think about it. Um, I'm for one, uh, and I, I'm gonna be open about it, I'm not pushing for it because there's a lot of factors there, the overtime factor, the, the, the fact that, and, and to be honest, the, the one that I, uh, the, the worries be the most is that we're, we're hardly gonna have any people there. That's, that's what I'm worried about, so, uh, and again, it could be only me, but, but I, um, eh, you know, just, just think about it, let's defer the item and, uh, and, and we'll bring it back, uh, next, uh, next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
April 15th. Thank you, sir.
Next item.
Item 11K, discussion in reference to purchase of water meters and reading system by director of public works.
Mr. Penna.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Water, 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 okay.
Water, water, water.
More water?
More water.
Our, our present system that we use for, for meter reading is going almost on 25 years. Therefore, uh, we have always bought the type of meter that you go out there and you read manually. With today's technology, uh, things are changing very quickly, and we are in need of buying more meters, and I don't wanna keep buying old-style meters if we're gonna have to eventually change the technology from the system we have downstairs anyway. So, uh, Ferguson, which is one of our main suppliers of all materials, has a meter that, uh, we've tested out here in the field in several homes and stuff like that, and it, it works very well. Uh, all the information is loaded to, through, through a program that they have to the cloud, and it is, uh, sent up there every two seconds, every two minutes of the day, the information goes up to, to the cloud with, uh, two-second intervals between the readings. Uh, what this does, it allows outrageous water bills to be seen way before they become outrageous, and it tells you at what specific time and on what date they occur. Um, again, this is technology that, that is way beyond anything we've ever seen here, and rather than keep buying the old-fashioned meter, I would like to transition into the new meter. Both systems will be operating, this doesn't remove the old system, but it gives us a start like we did 20 years ago when we went from the old registered dial-type meter to the, to the manual reading meter that we have now. It's, we've always bought like 100 meters a year in order to have in stock to replace. I've seen this in action, I've seen other ones from other vendors that we've been approached from, and from what I've seen work out here, this is, uh, outstanding. Not only does it free up personnel, you don't have to have a specific person to read the meters, it's just you have to have someone to be able to drive the vehicle up and down the streets, and the meters, the readings are loaded directly into the, the, the sending unit and back to City Hall.
Okay, uh, uh, any other cities that are doing this, just out of curiosity?
Yes, most of, all the cities, uh, in Broward are already doing this, and there's also, uh, a couple of cities here in Miami-Dade that are starting to do the same thing.
Mm-hmm. I think it's an excellent idea.
$5,000 goes towards the program, and the other $5,000 goes to the first 40 meters to start the program.
Okay.
Does this mean, okay, we're gonna start with 40 meters?
We'll buy 40 meters, because we're in need of meters right now for the projects that are getting.
So, you're gonna put in the 40 as basically new?
The new ones.
You're not replacing it, so what happens next? Do we start replacing the old meters?
Every year, we'll come back and we'll get, uh, authorization to buy at least 50 or 100 meters per year to replace.
So, we'll do this in increments, basically?
Exactly.
But the, the reading, the reading, the reading system you're buying, that will encompass reading all the meters once they've all been replaced?
Once they've all been replaced.
This one system will read everything once it's done?
That's correct.
We don't have to change the system?
No.
Okay.
What happens now is, since we have both systems, the old meter reading system that we have, which is named Itron, will keep reading that system manually, and then the, uh, on the reading day, we will drive the vehicle equipped already with the same gentleman that reads the meters, it's just gonna, he doesn't have to do anything for these, these will automatically be loaded into the vehicle as he's driving up the road.
And these meters will go exactly where the old meters are, in, in the alleyway or whatever?
Yes, yes.
Where, where they are today?
Yes, we're not leaving the Eastman, that's the, that's the whole idea, uh, in the future, the readings just, you don't have to go into the Eastman to get them, they just come straight out.
Can we install, install the first meter, the metering, uh, at 5951 Southwest 12 Street?
No, actually, we'll be installing them in the twin homes that.
And we're not displacing any, any work, this, the meter reader, I mean, we're not displacing any job.
No, it, it allows it, it allows.
To do something else, to do something else.
We're, we're short on staff.
Okay, just making sure.
It allows.
Multi-tasking, multitasking.
It's gonna free him up to do what he's.
Other things, and even in the event he's not here, anybody else can do it.
Okay, perfect.
That way, he doesn't have to see the tape again.
Okay, uh, no, 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 we, no, not yet, they haven't read the resolution. Final clerk.
Yes, item 11L, resolution of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager the expenditure of $10,000 for a started, uh, kit of a remote meter reading system, including 40 positive displacement meters and radios, a receiver, and easy reader software, and onsite training, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
I just have one more question, I just thought of it, you said this is going to avoid the problem we had with Mr. Bertamanti?
It'll, it'll notify us quicker.
What's quicker?
The actual leak occurring.
Yeah, but, um, let's say, the leak is today, how, how quick will we know?
Within the same day, because what it does, it, it, the system will.
Send an alert, maybe.
Will measure what your customary usage is, and anything that goes out of the ordinary will notify us.
So, the system.
Not necessarily a leak, but say.
Just usage.
Somebody left the water on, or you're filling up a pool today, things like that.
So, within the same day.
And we have notations of it when it occurs.
Perfect.
And we can have Mr. Quintana, Mr. Q, make an app where it can be downloaded from our website, put on your phone, and as soon as we have information, our residents can have that same information.
They have, they have the same access.
They have.
Because it's on the cloud. And also.
I make a motion.
And also, the, the best part for us will be, in the event of non-payment, we could turn it off electronically.
Great.
Um, Mr. Attorney, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, please.
Um, can we install the first meter at, uh, 5951 Southwest 12 Street?
I think the city manager wants to say so. I think the city manager wants to say something.
Mr. Penna, where do you propose funding this, uh, expense from?
From a regular water account.
That's a great idea, by the way.
For the, the one.
The 237 account.
The 237 account.
I made a motion already.
We have money in that account to cover this?
We have repair money, yes.
Yes.
We, we have a motion, and I need a second.
533, 237.
Second by Vice Mayor Planes.
Who, who seconded the motion?
Vice Mayor.
Okay, yes, okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Planes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Can you read item, uh, M and N?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11M, discussion in reference to purchase of ice machine, a machine for Public Works Department by Director of Public Works. Item 11N, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager the expenditure of a cap of $4,000 in connection with the purchase of an ice machine for the Public Works Department, providing for effective date, and, uh, also the funds are coming from general fund contingency funds.
529, 429.
Again, uh, this is a piece of equipment that is used daily at our Public Works Department, it provides ice for the men in water and all the other events that we have during the year. The one we presently have is eight years old, it took a, a, uh, it's beyond repair, I mean, we couldn't repair, but it's, we have to spend 50% of a new one into it, so it's not worth repairing it, therefore, I need a new one.
Okay, uh, any questions?
Madam Manager, you have something?
No, sir.
Where's the, the funds going to come?
429, 529, this is something we did not account for during the budget process, it came up, uh, after, so I'm, uh, requesting that we charge it to our contingency account in the general fund because it does service various departments, so the non-department should pick up the tab for this.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Ice comes from water, I'm done with water. Yes.
We'll have to put a meter in that ice machine.
I'm done with water, yes.
Vice, Vice Mayor Planes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Item O.
O, uh, item O, discussion in reference to Silvania Heights, a five, uh, fifth-grade graduation request for the use of the multi-purpose facility and waiver of fees, uh, this is from Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may.
Aye, absolutely.
I received a call from the vice president of the PTA today, um, to let me know that the principal and the fifth-grade teachers met, and they have decided to hold the fifth-grade graduation slash prom at the school, so we do not even need to discuss this, but she wanted to thank us for even considering that we would like to try to help out.
Okay.
She wanted to thank us very much for even considering, um, considering it, but it's done, they're gonna have it at the school.
You're welcome, Sune, if you're watching.
Yeah.
I thought I would definitely, you know, express her thanks to the entire commission.
Okay, uh, so I guess we don't need to make a motion?
No, Mr. Mayor.
A motion, okay, item P, please.
Item P, report by the office of the city manager in reference to CDBG application for the expansion of the West Miami Garden Club site at 1129 Southwest 66 Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 33144, by city manager.
And can you read item Q, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item Q, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami to commit the sum of $125,000 from park input fees as a match to a CDBG application for the expansion of the Garden Club park at the site located at 1129 Southwest 66 Avenue, West Miami, located in a CDBG entitlement area, providing for effective date by mayor and city commission.
Okay, Madam Manager?
Um, we reported on this under the manager's report, and we are going to need a resolution, that is why it's on the agenda, for the purpose of the submittal of the grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Penna, do you need anything to add to this?
No.
No?
Motion.
You don't like garden? Okay.
Second.
It takes water. All right, I was.
For the day.
First a second? Uh, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Planes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you, uh, go to the order.
Yes, I have, I do have something, and I'm very serious, uh, I know that we've all had some lightheartedness here, but I would like to compliment and congratulate our city attorney for always being duly and truly prepared to valiantly defend this city. I know that we as laypeople do not realize the, the, the consequences and implications of everything that is done, so I would like to thank him for always being so mindful of all these things that affect us all, so my hat's off to you, Mr. Penna.
Thank you, sir.
I second that motion.
Ditto, ditto.
All in favor say aye, but I got one more thing for good, aye, go to the order, uh,
one more for good of the order, uh. Today, today is one of those days that I had very little patience, and, uh, not only do I concur with the vice mayor in, 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 in reference to the city attorney, I thank you very much, but I go even further, I, uh, I'm, I'm glad that you were very brilliant tonight and, uh, helped me not to get in trouble tonight, so, uh, cuz I, I had a very short temper today, so, and my apologies for that, I should not do that, I'm the mayor and I should not do that, but, hey, listen, I'm human, and, and by the way, I guess today is April Fool, so that's why.
We're, we're a team, Mr. Mayor, we're a team.
And I, I really compliment you, you know, for, for helping out, so, anyway, uh, motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good night.